Okay, so the purpose of today's session really is to highlight the critical importance for all football and footsail clubs and organisations to have the appropriate plans in place and protocols in place to manage the risks. And in particular, to support the contact tracing efforts and meet our obligations under the Public Events Framework and Restricted Activity Directions. The reason for this is that football needs to take responsibility for its role in ensuring that we're able to support government and our fellow Victorians in managing our exposure to COVID-19. I will introduce shortly Dr Bridey O'Donnell, who's the Executive Director from the Big Events Team of DJPR and also some members of the DJPR as well as Department of Health, who will be able to present on that framework that I alluded to. And also will be available to answer any questions at the end of the session, but can I please just make this point? Unfortunately, the team on this call won't be able to answer any questions in relation to the circuit breaker restrictions and timing and pathway for when they may be lifted, okay? All that information is only available in the public domain and those on the call today won't be able to expand on that. We are here to help answer all your questions about registrations and submission processes under the Public Events Framework. So it's with great pleasure that we welcome Bridey, who's well known to us in football and was formerly led the Office for Women's Sport and did an outstanding job there. And Bridey, welcome to Football Victoria's meeting with the club.
Thank you so much, Kimon, and thanks Tess and my team for organising. Woman Jika Kiora, I just wanted to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land that I live and work on. They're the people of the Coolan Nation. They've been custodians of this land for tens of thousands of years. And I'd like to pay my respects to their elders, past, present and future, and any Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people on the call. Thank you all so much for making time to meet with us on a Tuesday night, late after work or while you're working in our case. This is a reschedule from last week and we want to thank all of the team at Football Vic for coordinating this process and particularly thank Sharon and Chris in my team for coordinating from our end. We're going to record the session, that's so that if people who can't come tonight, they can check it out in terms of getting information and getting the answers to those questions. If you want to stay on the call but you don't want your face to be part of that recording, just turn your camera off. But it's really important for us to be able to provide this sort of info to everyone who can't make it tonight. So as Kimon mentioned, we want to talk to you a bit about the Public Event Framework and sort of basic information, why we need one. Make sure you feel comfortable about why you would develop and register a plan or a checklist and I'll talk you through a bit about what those two different things are. We're going to talk to you a bit about the people in my team and how they work. And of course, we've got colleagues here from Department of Health who can talk through what their role has been and continues to be in approving of events. And as we mentioned, we don't have any info for you about what's happening with current restrictions or what might take place in the future. We're all waiting on that kind of information, but this is probably not a bad time for us to kind of take stock on what you know and understand about getting events approved or registered and then how we can help you to do that in a more streamlined way and that's really consistent across all your clubs. Just noting, we've got questions that we've received already, which is really helpful and we're going to get to those a bit later in the session. And then when and if there's time at the end, we'll go with just the hand up function if you have questions that haven't been answered. If we run out of time and we don't get to your question, that's okay, we will get to it. It'll either, you can add it in the chat and the team will respond, or it might be that someone else has asked your question as well. So we are a team that was established late last year, the Public Events Team, to support the return of COVID-safe events. We've got a group in our team that is really focused on sector engagement and they work across different parts of sport, of creative, tourism, business, local government, that sort of thing. The person running that team is Kirsten Corbin. She's had a lot of experience, formerly worked at Vic Health as a program manager. She's got lots of experience working with football, with local government, with clubs. But that said, she did just start yesterday and some of you may have had some engagement with Mark Hogan, who was previously acting in that role and he's been terrific as well, but he returned to his substantive role in regional development in Victoria. Working under Kirsten are three managers, Chris, Gina and Sam. And Chris is our lead on sport. He's actually been working with me since we started working in Return to Play, you know, back in sort of April and May of last year, when COVID was affecting professional sport. And then we worked across with Sport and Rec on supporting a lot of the A-League clubs and then NPL and then broadly the sport. So we've both had a fair bit of time managing COVID and how it impacts the sector. Just a reminder, if you could please go on mute because there's a bit of a weird echo at the moment. It's a bit of a bad sound for our recording. But also someone working closely with Chris is Sharon Wong. She's a familiar face to many of you. She's formerly worked at Football Victoria. She's also worked at Sport, Rec and Racing. So they've got a lot of insight about your code, about sport in general, but most importantly, from our perspective, on how events need to proceed in a COVID-safe way. Now, we've got colleagues from Health here tonight and I'd love to introduce a couple of them. I think Ryan B., I saw you join the meeting. If you're comfortable, could you introduce yourself and anyone else who's in your team tonight to say a quick hi?
There's also Ryan C. on the line as well. So there's a Ryan B. and a Ryan C. in the mix from Health, but we're essentially where the team that's been stood up in the Department of Health to support the return of events, much the same as Bridey's reference. But we facilitate the public health review process in consideration and work with a series of senior medical advisors and a public health advisory panel to facilitate that process and then carry it through to the recommendations to the show, which then progressed through to Bridey's team as the ministerial task force. But I'll throw it over to Ryan C. to introduce himself as well.
Thanks, Ryan. We're known affectionately as Ryan Squared, I think amongst different parts of government. I'm the Acting Executive Director in our public health team. So, you know, we have been on this journey, I think, along with Bridey and her DJPR colleagues. Since about October, I started in this space and primarily originally around the getting the big events like the Boxing Day Test back on board and also through the Australian Open, working pretty close with Tennis Australia. So we have gone through quite a journey where it was really quite restricted early on. Our sort of what was permitted under the Public Events Framework and that has grown over time. We've had different hiccups along the way, our Black Rock outbreak, the Holiday Inn outbreak and also currently what we're all living through at this very point in time. So I think my sort of opening remark that the sort of things we'll get to are really important. I know it can get, we get a little bit of complacency over time. I think we'd have gone, you know, a really good period of time without any community cases and then all of a sudden something happens in the South, over in South Australia and we find ourselves in this spot. So COVID, I think, is going to be, going to be with us and these precautions that we require of our public events, they're going to be necessary for a little while longer yet. And that's why I think the call tonight is really important to try and get some of that messaging across. Thanks, Bridey.
Thanks, Ryan. And big thanks to our health colleagues. As you can imagine, everyone working in government is busy, but Department of Health and our teams are really busy and so we're really grateful you're making the time tonight. So the Public Events Framework was developed by Ryan's colleagues in the Department of Health back in October and November. Cabinet endorsed it as a way forward to approve events in a COVID-safe way. So it was setting up effectively a set of rules around if you want to hold an event, to make the Chief Health Officer comfortable, to make our public health officials and then of course, government comfortable that that event is safe and is not going to increase the risk of transmission and can mitigate risks. Here is a set of guidance rules. We put up a website and tiers were established. And there's been a fair bit of change, as Ryan mentioned. We've had outbreaks that have set things back, we've had to reshape things, then we've had a much more optimistic view and so more and more events were permitted. And also the tiers changed and the way in which things were approved changed. And all of the things we're talking about tonight and the advice we're giving you is about how to operate and run your events, registration and approval when we're not in circuit breaker. But obviously, at the moment, no events are proceeding. Professional sport did proceed for a few days without crowds, but as you've seen, most professional sporting teams have migrated north for the winter, which is similar to what they did last season. We don't know for how long, of course, but NBL, A-League, you know, a lot of teams were thinking about that even back in March and April, wondering what their contingency plans were. And we know that's affected A-League clubs, of course, in terms of fixturing and scheduling. And it's obviously a lot more challenging for any type of community club to try to think about moving or relocating. So it's not within your budget, your remit and your opportunity. So that's why there's such an impact of something like a circuit breaker on community clubs. So what we also needed to really make sure we defined is that a public event is an organised public gathering. So there's sometimes that idea that a community sporting club, if you're running games every single Tuesday, Thursday night and all day Saturday, it is business as usual for that particular venue, if you're a football club or if you're a netball club or any type of sporting organisation. But that said, we as government and particularly our colleagues in Health, want to understand what does that event look like? What does a normal fixture look like on a Tuesday, Thursday night or a Saturday? How many games, how many people and what are your strategies around making sure that people who arrive, who are playing, parents, friends, officials, staff manning and womaning the canteen, that those people know how to do their jobs safely, how to manage an outbreak, how, and now of course, with being post 28th May, how do they ensure that everyone's QR code checking in, all those sorts of things? So what we have worked on Health and there's been some changes, as I said, over the last couple of months, is looking at a tiered system of public events. Tier one events are now classified as events with over 7,500 people. So most of the people on this call are unlikely to be running a tier one event, depending on the size of your, and we don't know, say for example, some of the FFA Cup finals games, maybe they're going to get big enough, there will be that at some of your venues. Apologies, I'm not sure exactly of how some of the teams are progressing before we're in a circuit breaker. But they can now proceed with 75% of the venue's fixed seated capacity. And if you don't have seats, it's about maintaining a density quotient of one per two square metres. You need zones, so you can't have all of those people roaming about everywhere. You need to have in your plan this ability to show that people will be in zones. Now, the purpose of that is not to try and ruins anyone's day or their experience as a spectator. It's absolutely with a public health lens. It's the idea and we see it in a big scale, if you go to Amy Park and you're watching City play, is if someone comes in through gate five and they sit in this particular row at Amy Stadium and they're watching the game and then they go home three hours later, if there's an outbreak or a case, public health team and the contact tracing team want to know, how can we find out who else was around that person? Can we use the CCTV? Can we use the ticketing and the zoning information to work out who was there so we can call them or text them? So that's the purpose of zoning. That's the purpose of understanding, checking in and ticketing and having all that information, absolutely with a public health lens. The other thing that's always important at every event is to have COVID-safe marshals. Now, the ratio has changed, it's been made a little bit easier to manage one COVID marshal per 200 people who attend. And they can also be a person who's got another job to do. Maybe they are an usher or they're a person receiving ticket holders as they come in. They can't be a person who works behind a bar or be bar staff because they're both physically constrained in their location. They can't wander around and check everyone's doing the right thing, but also because they're engaged in responsible service of alcohol. So bar staff can't double up as a COVID marshal, but lots of other people within your event can. And there's info on that on the website. So these are tier one events and all the A-League matches in Victoria are tier one events, whether they're at Amy or we've had them down at Cardinier, of course, with Western United, got a few games there. And I know Victory's had a couple of games at a Marvelous Stadium as well. So those games, when there's more than seven and a half thousand people, they're tier one. Pardon me. We talked before and when we introduced Ryan and Ryan about how we work with Department of Health. So we, DJPR, has a COVID-safe events inbox, every single event plan that gets submitted or registered through us. And there's been over 7,000 of them. They get reviewed by our team, triaged if you like. People check that all the info's there, they make sure everyone's got ticked all their right boxes or provided the info. And then if it's a big enough event that needs approval, we look through that, make sure all the info is correct and then we literally email those plans to Ryan and his team. And then it gets reviewed by a Department of Health person. Then a public health panel sits down and assesses it and thinks, okay, is this safe to go ahead? What advice might we need to provide back? Do we recommend this to the Chief Health Officer? And he approves or not, every single event that has proceeded in Victoria of this size. So you can imagine the workload for all of these people, it's been quite substantial. And by changing the tiers, what that's meant is also a lot of events smaller than that actually don't need approval anymore. They just need to be registered. And that's, I think, what's going to be really useful for you and your teams on this call tonight is to realise that for all events that are fewer than 7,500, they're tier two or even below 1,000 attendees. If you think you're going to have fewer than 1,000 people at a game, then that's a tier three event. All you need to do is complete a checklist, make sure you've got a plan for that venue and you're done. It doesn't take very long, but the benefit of that, and we've seen that in the last week, is that firstly, we've got a register of that event proceeding. We know what night of the week and who's the event contact and who do I call? If your club is identified as a tier one exposure site, all of that info is so important from a contact tracing point of view. The other reason it's really important, and this is what we were talking about with Football Vic last week, is what about when we need to send out a message to all of you that says, hey, everyone, we're looking like we're going into circuit breaker, this is what this means for you, this is the advice. We're going to hold a round table or a session. If you are the registered event organiser for a tier three event or a tier two, you'll get that email. You'll be part of this conversation to get updates. So this is why we want you to register your events regardless of their size. And what we know is particularly with the tier two, of which there are many, and the tier three, there are literally thousands, about 6,000 tier three events across all types of sport, arts, markets, concerts, all that sort of thing. That engagement, that back and forth communication between our team and between event organisers has been incredibly useful. And our team are real human beings, they answer those emails, they'll sometimes pick up the phone and say, hey, it doesn't seem like we've got all the information, can you please add in here what we need? So those, as I said, those tier one events need to be approved. Now, tier two events, which is between 1,000 and 7,500, depends a little bit on the type of event, but you absolutely need to complete a registration form. It's really self-explanatory and we've put this in the agenda tonight. If we've got the time, that's what we're going to step you through by sharing the screen. But again, same sort of thing, it's about what's the venue look like? Can you zone off some of the areas? Can you show that there's ticketing and of course, QR code check in? Can you show us a COVID-safe event plan? Publish it on your website. Now, the purpose of that is twofold. One is, if I'm a parent and my kid's going every week to these fixtures, whether it's training or a game, training I know is different, but sometimes there'll be parents and friends and people wandering around between pitches and fields that, or then using amenities, buying food and beverages at food trucks, all those sorts of things. That's a lot of people moving around and I know you know this, that's literally thousands of people moving around a large venue where you've got multiple games happening over a course of an evening or a day. So that kind of information is really useful, even if it's just a guesstimate on how many people are there. Because that way, if someone, if a kid or a parent who's been at one of those big fixture evenings or daytimes has been involved in an outbreak or has been to an exposure site, then that helps the contact tracing team give information accurately. So tier two events between 1,000 and 7,500 people, they need a plan, they need to be registered. They can have up to 75% of seated capacity or a DQ of two. Now, if you want things that are above and beyond what's in this framework, you seek approval. Ryan's colleagues review it, public health panel reviews it and the Chief Health Officer reviews it. So that's why, for example, we got to a point where we were allowed, where government had permitted 85% of the MCG to be filled. Or why we got to a point in earlier part of the year that the entire theatre at the Princess Theatre could be filled for Harry Potter. Because those venues or those events had specifically submitted a plan to be reviewed and was considered and said, hey, we'd actually like to have more people per square metre than you've listed. Or perhaps we'd like to have more of the seats filled or perhaps we'd like to have standing and roaming. And this has been a really key question for a lot of live entertainment and music. So I know that's slightly different to you, but I think a lot of the venues where you're hosting don't actually have a lot of seated capacity. They're used to people standing around the outside perimeter of the pitch or on one side, depending on the nature of your clubs. And so it's really important to understand how many people you've expected in the past at these sorts of events, how many people you're expecting now, what are the ways you're monitoring the entry and parking? And how do people QR code and where is that happening? This needs to be our new way of behaving, you know, it's like seatbelt wearing. And I've heard Ryan's colleagues talk about this as well. It's now, you know, 50 years since Victoria instituted mandatory seatbelts. And initially, everyone thought, what the hell, why would I wear a seatbelt? This is outrageous, changes the way I drive. It was a deep-seated resistance to seatbelt wearing back in 1971 and 72. Now, the idea of getting into a car without putting on a seatbelt seems, you know, absolutely terrifying. What we're asking of everyone, not just in Victoria but Australia-wide, is that our new way of going places is to have our smartphone or a concierge service or a pen and paper that allows people to check in so that we can find out who was where and when for health reasons. Not to track you or to annoy you, but absolutely in the event that we need to track, find who was there, trace, that data gets kept for 28 days. Finally, tier three events, these are events with up to 1,000 people. So again, depends on your venue size, depends maybe on the history of your event. They actually can be filled up to 100% of the venue's fixed seated capacity. So there's no limit, you can have up to 1,000 and that's because the Chief Health Officer has deemed, of course, before circuit breaker, that he was comfortable with events of that size proceeding. There's heaps more info on the website, so I don't want to go on about this. So what I think from your perspective for football clubs is it's generally going to be a tier two or tier three event. So not many events will go above seven and a half thousand, but there is an assessment tool on the website that can help you work that out. It'll ask you some questions, pardon me, and you can then determine what size event. You can submit a single event plan that will cover every single match at your home ground for the whole season. So you might say in your, in your plan, every Wednesday night between one April and 31 October. And we have that in our system, we have many, many events that say recurring, they're either weekly, twice weekly, whatever it is. And you'll say generally, they might have between, you know, 3,000 people on a big day and 600 people on a smaller day. That's what the type of event is. It's really important to bring as much information to those plans early on as you can and sort of share everything you know about the nature and the type of them. Like for example, if you say normally people park wherever they can and they all wander in from multiple locations, our team is going to ask, okay, how could you change that up a little bit? Just put some soft temporary fencing that actually helps corral people to come in through one or two entries where you can have some QR codes so that we know that we're capturing everyone who's arriving. And you've also got to be able to sign an attestation. So these are for events that don't need approval, they just need to be registered. You actually, as the event organiser, whether you're the club president, club captain, fixture manager, whatever that is, you complete the attestation, it's on the website, it asks you questions and you have to tick, yes, this is correct. I'm attesting, I'm taking on the risk as the person that says, hear all the things that I agree with. And you complete your plan, you attach it, a map is really helpful. It helps Chris and the team to kind of review it and say, I'm just still not sure, I've got some questions. We want to know where you might take people in the event that they were unwell or had tested positive or, you know, we did that certainly months ago when people were still taking temperatures. We need to know how you're managing amenities for that number of people, all those sorts of questions. And again, I don't want to bore you with my voice for too long because I want to get to our health colleagues to add some of their really valuable insights, but there's lots of information around on this on the website. But we want to know what are your most, what are your highest aspirations for attendance? Because that's actually very valuable. If you say most of your matches actually attend fewer than 1,000 people, but sometimes on a good day between two of the biggest clubs, you've had up to 1,500, register it as a tier two event. And then that way, if you've only got 700 one weekend, it doesn't matter. But it's better for us as people supporting you and it's so much safer for Department of Health to know that they're approving an event that may have up to 1,500, but the average expectancy is 600 or 700. Now, you're not actually, you have to submit these plans because we want to know you're doing the right thing. And we don't want you to host unauthorised events. We don't want you to have thousands of people coming to your club and have no one have a record of it. That's not permitted, but also it's dangerous. It's worrying in the same way that we're seeing, what we were seeing with mass gatherings is there then become limits on how that looks and how the Chief Health Officer is comfortable with the sizes of mass gatherings. And this is actually why the Public Events Framework was developed late last year. It was to say, we know events want to proceed, here's a set of rules that allow them to operate outside of the direction. So when you could only have 100 people gathering in a park, for example, if you can show us and demonstrate while you're being safe and consider about how this whole thing will proceed, we'll actually be allowed to have more people. And that raises the question we often get all the time is how come you can have more people at Amy Stadium than you have in a small live venue? It's actually because of it being outdoor, you're seated, everyone's ticketed, everyone's QR code when they check in. And that venue, particularly Amy, and we've worked very closely with Melbourne Olympic Park, they've got a really strong COVID-safe event plan and it can be modified depending on how many people are showing up. So I just wanted to shout out a big thank you to a few clubs because we've already got some COVID-safe event plans from Avondale, Melbourne City, Pascavau Football Club, South Melbourne Football Club, Wyndham United, Yarra Jets. So these are some of the clubs that have already sent through plans. We've got them in our system, they've either been reviewed or approved. But if there are other clubs that have submitted them we haven't mentioned, I'm sorry, but we thank you. And we'll make sure we cross-check with one of either Chris Bennett's or Sharon Wong to make sure we follow that up. So we hope after tonight and in the coming days, we're going to see a lot more plans from a lot more of your clubs so that we can get some visibility over numbers of events, types of events, types of venues. If you don't mind, I'm going to hand over to Ryan C. or B., whichever one would like to add if there's been any, if you wanted to fill any of the gaps that I've missed or add anything from a health perspective around, for example, those exposure sites at Preston Lions last week or health-related matters.
Thanks, Bridey. Great job summarising everything and sort of introducing it. I won't try and add too much, but a couple of things that I think are important. I guess from a, from a risk point of view from the Department of Health, there's probably a couple of major things which I think Bridey touched on, but I'll just sort of reinforce. All things being equal, the size of the crowd to attend an event is the absolute number one thing. So if we've got two events of exactly the same type, but the size of that crowd will increase the risk. So if there's more people there, obviously there's a greater chance of COVID spread at a particular event. So that's absolutely our sort of number one consideration. That's why those tiers are separated the way they are. So those, you know, event at tier one is going to get a lot more scrutiny from us because there is that inherently greater risk with crowd sizes. So for many of those, many of the smaller, your regular games at a community level, they're inherently more safe than having a big match at Amy Park, for example. Outdoors versus indoors is another one of the big ones. So again, this is another tick for many of your local games. If your crowd are spending the majority of their time outdoors, that is inherently safer than, from a COVID point of view, than indoors. So we know in the recent, the current outbreak is sort of showing this out, is that environments indoors amplify the chance of COVID spread. So that's another one we sort of take into account when looking at events. Seated versus non-seated is another big one, so Bridey's definitely touched on that. It is easier from a, from a contact tracing point of view to know that a patron who unfortunately is tested positive has sat in this particular seat for the majority of the game. And so therefore, we can concentrate our, our contact tracing effort around those people who have sat near that person rather than having to consider the whole venue and the whole crowd to be close contact. So there'll be other movement that takes place. So this is where we can get to a point where we approve 85,000 EMCG because we've actually worked really hard with the venue to break it down into larger zones, but even subzones within that, which does give us confidence that we're not contact tracing 85,000 people, but a much, much, much smaller figure that can be managed by our contact tracing teams. The other one is, so non-seated, just to sort of touch on that. So the, that roaming element does mean that it is, you do potentially have greater spread and greater contact with other patrons within the venue. And it's a bit harder from a contact tracing point of view to drill down someone's location when they could have, you know, watched the game from one half at one end of the goals of a stadium in the first half and then moved to, you know, walk around slowly around the ground and find themselves down the other end, but have, you know, taken a time to get there. So that's a, that's a harder contact tracing effort. But recognise that for many community games, that's a reality and that's something we can work with. Crowd behaviour is then the last one. So it's a tough message for some of our colleagues in the live music industry, unfortunately. But singing, dancing and chanting, the really fun stuff, unfortunately, from a COVID point of view, these are the behaviours COVID love. And so shouting and chanting, which does happen at football matches with passionate crowds, that does increase the chance of COVID spread. So there's something we do have to factor in. So someone sitting and watching Harry Potter is unlikely to, I'm sure there's moments of laughter there, but... much less likely to be chanting and singing their club song than, than crowds at a football match. So there is a difference there, but that we do factor in as well. So those are sort of some of the big risk things. I think when it, I'll just touch on briefly, there are nine key things that we look at when it comes to our COVID safe event plans, which really sort of when we're looking at our tier ones that we, that we focus on. So we'll just touch on these. So, and Bridie has gone on many of them, so I won't spend too much time here. But record keeping is absolutely our first priority for us. Our contact traces and their ability to be able to identify who has attended a venue and, and a particular event is of utmost, most importance. It's playing out right now. So you can see the, there's been a lot of attention in the community about a number of bars and nightclubs where there's been outbreaks, where the QR code, QR coding has been pretty loose and we've had some concerns about that. Those have been the real focus of our messaging about trying to reach out to people who attended those events just because those are venues, because we simply don't know who went there because there, there isn't that record keeping. Zoning for tier ones is, is, as Bridie touched on, is, is really crucial. And that, that does come back to that contact tracing about being able to shrink down our number. So if we know that we've had hard zones at an event and someone's in zone one and never go into zone two, well, we don't have to worry about the patrons who attended zone two when it comes to a, a COVID outbreak at an event. Communications, that pre-event messaging to, to your patrons is, is really important for us as well about staying, you know, all the messages that we have heard repeatedly over the last sort of 12 months about staying home if you're unwell, offering refunds and the like, getting those comms out are really important. Crowd management. So again, this is just reinforcing the behaviours and the, and the protocols you set out in your COVID safe plan. So how you do that. And COVID safe marshals, I know there's a questions popped up in the chat, are really important for that. So those are your people who, and I'm just sort of saying that, what does a COVID safe marshal do? So they effectively execute your COVID safe plan. So if you've got X amount of people and there's a nice little, Bridie's stuck a great little link there. But effectively, they're the ones who are monitoring your, your crowd to see that they're, they're behaving in a way that fits in with your COVID safe plan. So it might be your, you know, you've got 200 people in a zone, they're going to monitor that and make sure that's okay. You're going to have, if you've got a seated event, they're the ones sort of monitoring that, that behaviour. Cleaning, cleaning is a really important thing for us. So your high touch services, your bathrooms, et cetera. Having regular cleaning of those spaces is one thing that we've found to be, that reduces the risk of COVID spread. So really important that happens pre and post, post events and throughout where, where it's possible. Hygiene is sort of related to that cleaning. So that's, you know, having hand sanitizer for your patrons and, and the like. Staff, we look at the PPE that's available for staff. So they'll really depend on what the wider directions are. So if mask use is being mandated in the community, then that'd be something that we would expect that you've got sort of made provisions for your staff to, to be compliant there. And the last one is your management of a positive case. So if someone were to present to an event, one of your members of your crowd presents to your cover safe marshals, your first aid staff, whatever it might be with symptoms, you have it in your plan and know what the response is. So be it isolating that person or getting medical treatment and what that looks like. That's my nine, nine key things to talk across Bridie. So hopefully that's provided some indication. We do have detail on, on each of these in our FAQs on the, on our events website.
Thanks so much, Ryan. That's really useful. I think one of the things that became really apparent to us last week and it's helped prompt this conversation between our team and Football Victoria was just around what was happening with the outbreak. Some exposure sites were identified at large stadiums, so the MCG and Marble Stadium. But because those venues were registered, they had really strict protocols and to Ryan's point, they were able to identify where that person was. It actually made the contact tracing really simple. But then when we knew that the Preston Lions match had gone ahead on 21 May, we had no record of it and it was listed as a potential exposure site. So we thought we'd heard there were around 2000 to 3,000 people there. If that figure's accurate, it's a tier two event. We hadn't seen any type of COVID safe event plan. And what we're worried about is firstly, if we'd known that that event had proceeded, there would have been information distributed to them much more quickly. But also we don't know then how many people did come. If there was ticketing, if you could have told us how many people were there, what was the QR code uptake like and, and how can the contact tracing team work? So this isn't about bringing punitive or punishing measures, it's about working with you to share information. That's the purpose of the public events framework. Let's run events, let's reopen community sport, professional, sub, sub elite and professional sport in a way that's safe and be able to respond when things aren't going to plan. So we're going to answer some questions. We've had them sent through. I'm going to do my best to go through those and note that we might, if we don't get through them all, we'll respond to you. I do want to take up, Liam, you asked a question about QR code. What's your responsibility for ensuring people do it? This comes also back to, to the COVID safe, the COVID marshal and having a plan. I'm going to use a bigger example of how Ryan and my teams met with one of the big professional sporting clubs without having some challenges about behaviour at events. And a big part of that was let's ensure that communication to your staff. So if you've got, let's use for example, you've got 10 COVID marshals for your day, for your 2,000 people. And if you say to them, these are the things you're allowed to say, these are the expectations of our plan. This is what to do if someone's rude or aggressive or, you know, resistant to you and this is how we'll manage it. If you've got that whole protocol in place, then if you're saying to someone, hey mate, you're supposed to wear a mask or hey mate, can you please check in and they're rude or they refuse, firstly, you can say, this is a public event. We're running this event. We want it to be as safe as possible. One of the expectations of that event is you check in. Now, we don't want you to get into a fight with anyone, but it's the same expectation that government is asking of every venue, every cafe, bar, theatre venue, you know, no matter where you go. And we know this is something that we've raised earlier about complacency, that that's generally been there. If there's any upside to having the circuit breaker restrictions, it's that everyone has been jolted into this really important reminder that there's no time for complacency, that we need to get tested when we're unwell, we need to be vaccinated and we need to QR code when we go places. So this is, for all of us, a very confronting, teachable moment about our new way of running events. If you as a club are hosting an event, then actually you are responsible for communicating to people. You are when people are driving into the car park, there'll be a sign that says, we're going to ask you to QR code check in. So that's, that's the messaging that you can say. You put it in your plan. You talk to all the people who are running as officials and marshals and all those things so that they know what to say and they're all saying the same thing. People don't have a smartphone or they've got multiple dependents or older relative who doesn't have the right equipment. You need to have your backup plan and there's a lot of info there on the Services Vic website about what to do for people who might not have the right technology. Or if you're in regional Victoria or rural Victoria and the network drops out and that's been something that's been brought to us as well, you just, you just have your backup plan. But we need to be able to say, and Ryan's teams and contact tracing team need to be able to call you and say, g'day mate, how many people were there? Give us the list so that we can make sure we're minimizing the spread. So that's answered that first question. Okay, first question, these are pre-submitted. What documents need to be published on our club website? So you need to publish your COVID safe event plan if you're tier one or two or the COVID safe event checklist, which is a bit of a shorter, more simple document if you're tier three. You just, and the link is going to be put in the chat by my team. It's, it's a, it's a bit about responsibility of your organisation or club to do the right thing. But it also means that a parent or an official or anyone coming thinks, okay, this is good. This club's got their, their checklist or their plan published. I know what they're going to do if things go astray or if I've got questions. It's about accountability, transparency, good communication. Someone's asked about the role that game marshals have in enforcing COVID safe requirements on visitors or spectators from either team, if they refuse to comply with mask requirements and how do they balance? Probably comes back to a little bit of my earlier question. The more information you can give a COVID marshal about what they're allowed to do and what they're empowered to do. We don't want to get anyone into a situation where they're unsafe. They need to be at least 18 years old. They need to have basic infection control awareness training. They don't have any enforcement powers, but the whole messaging needs to be, the COVID marshal's there to help you as the event organizer or the club, do the right thing, implement your plan. And then also escalate when things go wrong or strange. Or a really great example is early on in the public events framework, there were some events proceeding at wineries, some concerts. They had crazy terrible weather. So they had to change their way, the patrons were exiting. We got a call from the event organizer saying, we just want to check, this isn't in our plan, but we're actually going to use a completely different road. Victoria Police are here, they're going to help us. Is that okay? We said fantastic. Thank you for working with us and giving us the info. That way, if anything was to change and they said, yeah, we had to shimmy, you know, 2,000 people down a different street because of what was going on with inclement weather. They were making a smart decision on the hop, but they did it by creating some information. This is where communication is really important and whether you're doing that with Football Victoria, with Sport and Rec Victoria or with our team, it's really important to make, keep that dialogue going. What specific guidelines will need to be implemented for canteen food service? So that's specific around food and beverage services. My team will put the link in the chat. But there's restrictions and guidance about hospitality and about food and service, food and beverage service. Ryan mentioned that as well around making sure high touch areas are cleaned, making sure, we've certainly seen even when members of the public didn't have to wear masks, a lot of service staff were because they are coming into contact or at closer proximity to many, many more people than if you just happen to be standing at the, at the game and watching. What are the exact steps expected of a large community soccer club which hosts between 25 and 45 home matches each weekend? So some of this was sort of already covered, but it's a matter of what's your maximum number of people? If you've got 45 home matches on a weekend, on the best weather day with the best, the biggest teams, what's been your biggest number? Making sure you're including that so that people can get a sense of like best case scenario for you. And also what might be your average attendance over a course of that weekend? Make sure you've got a map of your venue, make sure you show us how parking and where people are coming from car parks and where people might be coming from public transport. And then if the dates change or things change, you just email us. Our team are constantly engaging with event organizers and this week particularly, Circuit Breaker has meant all these events are cancelled. So we're communicating with events on what does this mean? When can we postpone to? What other info do we need? What are the regulations about the number of participants and spectators and does it include parents? So this was mentioned when we talked about tiers. Yes, inclusive of parents regardless of the role, guardian, et cetera. People who are attending an event, who aren't actually participating either as an athlete or an official are seen to be attendees. So it doesn't matter what they're doing. And noting that this is really relevant for community and junior sport is because sometimes your kid might go and play and then they watch some of the games afterwards. So then they become a spectator or an attendee. So you need to have a good sense of what's the sort of number of people. And I don't think it hurts in your case to count the number of people in teams and officials, et cetera, because then you're really giving Department of Health and our team a really good sense of what's the number of people on the pitch? Who, who's working in the club? Do you have any security? Is it not necessary? What, what are some of the aspects? So just have a think about it. I mean, if anything, again, I know this is administrative, but it actually gives you a good sense of like, how many people are showing up every weekend or every evening for these games? What's, what's our turnover in the canteen? How often do we need to clean that area? Do we have enough toilets and amenities for people? Do we have disability access toilets? You know, all of the things that actually help you deliver a really great event and improve your club's amenities. I think that that's all of the questions that we have sent in. So now I wondered if, if people have, people have been adding some questions to the chat. So what I might do is we might try and answer those, but if you have a, if any of you have other questions and, and you want to put your hand up, please do. Okay, great question from Greg. Can an event proceed if there is no COVID marshal? No. There, there needs to be people to help you support your event to proceed. But noting, and this is on the webs, on our website as well, they don't have to just be a COVID marshal. They might also be an official or they're on the gate or they're involved in another capacity as well. You will have volunteers at your event. But if you're, if you think about what we've just described and how Ryan's talked about, you know, the impact of, of some of these outbreaks. Victoria and the chief health officer is not comfortable with three or 4,000 people coming every weekend to something and having no one overseeing how that works and looking at how people are QR code checking in. You, you don't have that happening at Chadston. There are people who work there whose sole purpose is to look around at how people enter and exit and even more so now since the 28th May Services Vic deadline was approached. You know, that, that idea, I think even more and more people are checking, I've noticed this in the last few weeks before we were in lockdown. You go into a cafe and someone say, can I please see your phone that you've checked in before we take your order? Or as you go up to the bar and you're buying a beer or something, they might say, can you show me you've checked in? So I think we can all agree, Victoria's probably been a little bit slow to make this part of our natural behaviour. But this is where we want to get to, that we're all looking after each other, the same way that we wear masks even when we're well. That's me protecting others whose health might not be as good and also minimizing the risk of anyone spreading coronavirus when they're asymptomatic. I'm going to, sorry, I'm just going to keep going up to a couple of the questions. Helen, hey Helen, how are you? I think Sharon's put the link in there. It'll be about, it's about number of people per day. So over the course of a day, that's something that health has talked us through over the last couple of weeks. Jasmine's asked, we run training every night of the week and games on Sundays. It's each of those days a separate event. So training is business for your club. And remembering what helps is to look at the directions, so the restricted activity directions permit large numbers of people gathering at training. So parents standing around watching their kids train on a Tuesday night is not a public event. But once you want to exceed the gathering limits of how many people are allowed to gather in public, you know, it's been as low as 20 and 30 sometimes and it's been as high as 1,000. So you need to check what the gathering limits are and obviously we're in lockdown, so it's different. But once we come out of that and we, you can see what gathering limits are, it may be that all the nights of the week that you're training, no one's coming and watching. It's not a, no offence, but it's, it's not socceries or Matilda's training. But on a weekend when people are coming, they're buying drinks, they're buying food, they want to watch or there's a couple of games building up to the seniors or these FFA Cup games. If you're anticipating and you're bringing in a coffee cart and you are planning for an event, then you're committed to that being an event. That's what we want to see. You submit your checklist or your COVID safe event plan for. That's the stuff. Because you as a club are coordinating it, you're inviting people, you're advertising it, you're promoting it. It suddenly becomes something different than just Tuesday night training. So think about it that way. Look at the definition of a public event on our website. It'll help you work out what's happening. And similarly that you've got a kid going to swimming training at IMSAC on a Thursday night, that's just swim training. But you hold a swimming carnival there, hundreds of kids all sitting in the stands, hundreds of parents, lots of people in and out, officials standing at the end of the lanes, that's, that's an event and it needs an event plan. Jim's asked, what about general public that walk their dog through the park as we use a public park, most clubs do? It's a great question and that comes up a lot. Sometimes people will be holding a public event in an open space, whether it's, you know, Edinburgh Gardens or as you say, you might be holding something and they're walking around it. Hopefully they're not walking across the pitch during the game, but you never know, they could be anti-football. It's definitely a bit about remembering, we're asking people to QR code check in if they're somewhere longer than 15 minutes. We're asking people to get into the habit of that. Also, you can't control if you're in a public space and there's no formal or high fencing. You're right, you can't fence off every aspect of it all the time. But I think it's, some of these questions could be answered more easily if you send through a bit of a map of what your club looks like. Show us a bit about like, where is the pitch relative to the river or the park or the pedestrian area? Or, you know, are people wandering through because you've also got a social club and people go there for a beer perhaps? Or you're right, it's a great dog walking or an open dog play area. So some of these questions we can answer if we've got a, a bit of a map. You send through a picture to someone in our team through COVID safe events and they'll respond. It'll be Sharon or Chris or someone in the team will say, hey, this looks like this to me. I reckon you should try that. No offence in Hampton, that's because you all love each other in Hampton and everyone wants to get along. So again, Jim, that's a bit about your venue. Send us through a map. I reckon that will really help. So I think Bill, I answered that question too. Training during the week require a COVID marshal and a registration as an event? No, but don't forget that venue needs a COVID safe plan. Every venue in Victoria does. Doesn't matter if you're manufacturing, retail, hospitality or a community sporting club, you do need a COVID safe plan, remember? So you should have one for that venue. If you don't, now's the time to develop it. And then you can register your checklist or your COVID safe event plan for the busy times when you know you're going to hold an event. I hope, I hope that makes sense, but our team can work that through with you. Bill's asked, do COVID marshals have to go through training to become qualified marshals? So we put the link in there, they need training in infection prevention control. It's pretty straightforward, but it's that idea about like, what am I looking for as I look around behaviour and are people observing? You know, remember when there was a lot of very strict advice about 1.5 metres? So that idea of you might wander up and say, hey, when you're in this queue waiting for your drinks, do you mind spreading out a little bit? So that idea of you might wander up and say, hey, when you're in this queue waiting for your drinks, do you mind spreading out a little bit more? I mean, people I think are being really good and mindful about that stuff. I went to a footy game a couple of weeks ago in Darabin. And people were queued for, like, they left almost two or three metres. The queue went for a really long time and people kept wandering past going, are you in the queue? Are you in the queue? It was a very relaxed kind of atmosphere. I think that generally members of the public are really wanting to do the right thing. And so sometimes a COVID marshal reiterating that that to them is actually very helpful. So it's, it doesn't, you don't need to feel as though the COVID marshal is going to face uh combat or resistance or rudeness or aggression. And if you do, obviously, our advice is back away. But you need a plan to manage that stuff. Like, if you've got a really difficult person or rude, aggressive, abusive person. Um and we've read a couple, a couple of instances about that in some big events in the last few months. You, you need to look after yourself, but your club needs to be aware of what what what's the plan there for that person. Um and I know that this is generally about how do we manage difficult people um at community sporting events, because they're they're always going to be around. So how do we, you know, incorporate that into your event plan in other parts of managing difficult people? Uh Monica, sorry, Peanut, sorry, has asked, is the expectation that local community clubs run a ticketed and seated arrangement for games where there is outdoors seating and sheltered? The purposes of the public events framework actually allows up to seventy five percent of yours ticketed and seated capacity. So you can automatically as part of that get approval for that many people already, noting that a lot of venues are mixed. So there'll be standing areas as well and you need to observe your DQ ratio. So this is why you need a plan, because you might say to us, here's our seating capacity, we've got a grandstand of five hundred. So you're allowed three hundred and seventy five people there. And then you've got this much square meterage on the other side of the pitch. So this is how many people we can allow. And then Health or our team will go, that looks good to us. That that's also why you have ticketing, because then you don't let five thousand people come to that venue, because it would exceed those expectations. It crowds people together uh and it's not compliant with the public events framework. So no one's trying to catch you out here or um, you know, trick you. This is all about working with you to make sure what you're doing aligns. If you think you want to have more people, if you absolutely are and desiring having more people, you either have it at a different venue or you have to go through an approval process and Health will want to ask you a lot more detailed questions, sort of like what Ryan um outlined. I'm just mindful of time. We've got five minutes left. Uh do you need to record seating allocation? Again, I think that needs to be a question that we answer specific to your venue, if you don't mind Peanut, um so that we can understand exactly what your venue looks like and how many people you would normally have. Oh, thanks, Bill, for putting that info. Sharon link had more detail, that's true. I'm going to hand back to Kimon, um because I wanted him to close the meeting and I want to thank you again all for your time on a Tuesday night. Um obviously acknowledging, we're all in a really challenging in an uncertain time while we wait to see how things are tracking for Victoria. Um you might have relatives in aged care, you might have children that you're homeschooling and it's really hard when we're all trying to do all of our lives and we're all trying to then do our jobs on top of that. So thank you so much for being part of this conversation. I'm sorry, it feels like me talking the whole time. So I'm going to hand back to Kimon. We'll make sure we get to all of your questions um and ensure we can support you. And and Football Vic needs to be that really key point of contact because they're so well equipped to to respond initially. But handing back to you. Thanks, Kimon.
All look, um thank you so much. We're genuinely grateful to you and your team for uh the hard work that you're doing behind the scenes to 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 provide us with an opportunity to have a season. Uh we're really grateful for that and we recognise the stress and complexity that comes with it and we we we, I'd like to thank you on behalf of all of our, all of our clubs. So uh tha- thank you very much for 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 joining us tonight. Um to to our clubs, uh thanks again for for joining. Uh we really appreciate you uh taking responsibility for for the, for what happens in your environment. Uh we remain at your disposal to assist you with any questions that may arise. Tess will be in touch with all of you following the call tonight. Once again, Tess and and the Football Victoria team, thanks for organising tonight. To our clubs, thanks again. And stay safe and Bridie to you and your team. Uh we're we're grateful once again and thank you very much. And have a lovely evening. Okay, thanks everyone.